Yeah.
About seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda?
Well, I might have one, but I might be able to put it under my report. The ASHA conference, should I just put it under my committee report?
Is it just a request to attend?
Yeah.
You can do a motion off of that report if you feel like it.
Okay, then I won't add it.
Anything else? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agendas presented? Any questions on Miles' motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oops, I included already.
You start the year off wrong.
Call the question. And it's carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, moving on to the regular council meeting on December the ninth. Any questions, errors, or missions? If not, somebody wish to move the... Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And that too is carried unanimously. Okay, committee of the whole of January the sixth. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, somebody wish to move in? Paul? Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, with delegation, so we'll move on to correspondence, municipal affairs. Any question on the MSI future funding?
Did we know that there was going to be nine and fourteen percent reductions in the next two years? To be note the amount?
Kind of, I think they leave in the, I think Kim cut some information on it too.
Yeah, so they, that's basically what they put out to the AUPA and RMA, just to begin with. The exact numbers weren't known because they, of course, had some funding. And I think that they were still working towards this, the new framework that they're putting together. And exactly what that would look like when they split it out amongst all the communities.
This will make it a little scarier if policing is coming onto our plate too.
It will.
Unfortunately, like MSI is in a lot of the, it's more a gift, you know, type thing. They, it was put in for, by Stelmack and it's been pared back, pared back. Restrictions put on it too. Originally, when Stelmack brought it in, it had no restrictions. You could use it on whatever you wanted, as long as you felt that you could do it type thing. And now it's cut to some restrictions.
So they give us our own money back and put restrictions on it.
Yeah. Yeah, it was to replace this education tax. Anyway, it's just a letter of information unless I-
So is the education tax going down twenty-three percent?
I don't think so, but we can always hope, I guess.
Well, no, probably not.
Okay, moving on to the five-two, the community foundation, Lumberidge and Southwest in Alberta. So that's a newsletter from them.
Shirley did stop by for a in-person visit and did let us know about the programs they have for, it's a social program for programs that help people starting businesses, that sort of thing. Not like community futures, but people at risk, that sort of thing. It's focused at that. And they've got a dedicated revenue stream that can go to nonprofits and groups. So for our information, I sent it off to our FCSS. Hopefully, they'll be able to see if they fit into the criteria.
Are you able to attend the dinner? Mr. Mayor, are you able to attend the dinner?
Oh, I didn't even think about it.
Didn't read the last paragraph?
No, I did, but I never even thought about it. Honestly, didn't. That's quite a ways away from me, so. Yeah, I honestly didn't think about it. And assuming that it's for everybody that wishes wants to attend it. Okay, anything else on that one? Okay, moving on to the Badlands. Any questions on? Kim and I did meet, it's in Kim's report with the lady from the Canadian Badlands. And Lana, Lana, is that what it was? Somebody had a kind of nice discussion. It was right around lunchtime and she did leave the brochure. There is a brochure if you want to see the rest of it. I think I took mine home, but I should keep it.
It is worth mentioning, this letter does mention the invoice for our membership. So it has continued with the membership. It's fifty-six cents per capita and with a cost of living increase to it. So for our community, it's just a little over a thousand dollars, a thousand and sixty-eight dollars.
So is she touching these with her tourism?
Yeah, she came around to, I think her goal was to try and hit up all the groups that were in it. She had planned to come earlier, but the weather wasn't very nice and so they changed it.
I really think that that is something we really should be part of, like in a big way, because they seem to be getting people right a lot.
Bonnie's been having quite a bit of correspondence with on it lately and really, especially on the, on the focus of the experience of the tourism center. See how we can partner with them to get people steer this direction.
Yeah, and day trips because we're close to the city.
Do you require motion in the invoice?
No, it's your recurring, recurring.
Thank you. Anything else on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to Alberta Health Services with the notification of helicopter review. Originally, at one time like that, Mayor's meets for Southern Alberta, there was quite a bit of discussion because there is another group out of Madison Hat. Anyway, yeah, thank you. Anyway, they, but they're going to review all of them. So I don't know how many other fixed or rotary area in the province of Alberta. But I assume there's probably more, so they're reviewing the whole system. Some new questions on that letter? Okay, if not, we'll move on to five-five, assess the year modifiers, changes in the modifiers. And again, I think there's a mistake. Because if you take a look at, I know that this was given to us and it wasn't something that we did, but if you look at the railway, it goes from one point four one zero to one point four six zero. And they say it's a three point five five increase.
That's a percentage change.
But if you look at the rest, like, you know, none of them went up more than point five, point three five, point three six, up four nine. And yet, that one didn't change, it only changed, you know, like a zero five.
Fraction, yeah.
So I thought that must be a mistake in the calculation.
Might be point thirty-five.
That's what I thought, it should have been, yeah, point three five instead of three point five. And again, it's not our fault, it's somebody else's.
And as for the councillors, I've already asked the question, but for the rest of that, the only thing that affects us here is the Emenean Railway. And just so you have an idea, it's the AccuGas pumping station building and the railway that runs through town. It affects us, we don't have any, don't have any oil wells in town, all sorts of things.
What was the first thing you said?
Of the AccuGas pumping station.
So anyway, it's not much of a difference. I just, when I noticed that addition, I thought that was a mistake. I did do that, calculated it up. Personally, I just did mentally, and I thought.
Doesn't make sense.
Didn't make sense.
And Ryan's, whatever, changes our accessories.
So does this affect the county significantly more than us?
Yeah, because the first four are big with them. Railway again is a, you know, I guess, no, even all of them, I think, machinery and equipment.
Yeah.
I think everyone on there would affect the county unfortunately or unfortunate.
So the telecommunication carrier, our tower that we lease land to, that isn't affected by that, Rogers?
It don't leave from our end.
Okay.
They leased the land from us rather than only.
Yep. Okay, so any questions on that one at all, on the assessment one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the self-growth report. Any questions on any of the, if you would mention it? Okay, and then the letter from Mr. Weisner.
We received this on Friday. I did have a chance to respond to it. It arrived via email, so I did have a chance to respond to him. Let him know that the town and Pevitt had approached hotel chains in the past for this idea because it's been brought up several times before and that we don't seem to fit into their traffic model yet.
And what you're going to get for swimming pools you could put inside this room?
They were, there was some that showed from the review that I did of the information that was available, there was interest, but no one liked to comment, so.
Then we have no idea how long it will be before they will-
So that's why council moved forward with.
Yeah, and I think unfortunately, we've noticed that none of the groups have come along and even started to process of building a new hotel or motel, so.
Well, I was told until the oil patch picked up again.
Yeah, so anyway, thank you for replying to-
Yeah, he did thank it and his response was, we're bringing it forward for a discussion if there's, so.
Okay, so any questions on any of the seven that were submitted? If not, can we have somebody file a correspondence, George Lee? Okay, any question on George Lee's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to bylaw number fourteen eighty-seven dash nineteen. And that's the borrowing bylaw.
I had one question for you, sir. When it says the recommendation is that, sorry, the swimming pool borrowing bylaw is the second reading. Can it be second and third?
Yes, it is. So you can see by my report right before, under the conclusion, council may now move forward with second and third readings of the bylaw if it's favorable.
I can even read that.
And I'll just explain to the rest of council, the reason why the recommendation is only to do one is because when I make a recommendation in these reports through ICAWS, it automatically loops them into the agenda as a motion. So we can't have a motion for second and third reading as one motion. So I have to do second reading and then we have to create a new recommendation for third reading and council wants to go ahead and do third reading. Karen and I already have them built in the background, but according to my report, I can only put one. They only allow you to make one recommendation at a time.
So the borrowing is going to be the five point two million, right?
No. No. Borrow, we are borrowing two point five one two seven one seven.
Okay.
The total amount of money that will be available for the pool project with that borrowing will be five point two 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 nine one seven.
But don't we have to borrow the whole five and then?
Not on this, not for this borrowing bylaw. This borrowing bylaw is the main AFSC for doing debentures. When we do the short-term borrowing from a financial institution for the purpose of construction, we can borrow, it has to have a borrowing bylaw, but doesn't have to follow the same procedure for this and we can borrow up to what we need for the project.
So we won't borrow the reserves or the provincial grant money that we have in the bank?
That we have in cash.
In the cash. And if some on the Dosh nation side, if it comes through earlier than we needed, then we'll just borrow whatever's left. And then at very end, so it's like when we do a street, we do the same thing. We don't go, even though we've applied for to borrow two point five, we don't borrow that full two point five until all the expenditures are done. So we might find out that we only need to borrow one point five. But we have allowed ourselves to borrow up to two point five one two seven one seven for this project. So the day, when we borrow the money, we're hoping that we don't have to borrow half of that. But it gives us that ability to borrow all of that if we need to. So that's why the advertising went out with that same clause, looks exactly the same of amount.
So George Lee, if you read this line right under here, right under the costing model for the project, in order to complete the project, it will be necessary for the town of Vulcan to borrow the sum of two billion five hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy for a period not to exceed twenty-five years from the Alberta County Capital Finance Authority or another authorized financial institution by way of issuance of debentures on the terms and conditions referred to in this bylaw. So basically, what you're doing with this bylaw is the issuing of debentures when the project is finished. In order to do the construction, once this bylaw is passed, the MGA allows you to do short-term borrowing. So for twenty-five years, if you're borrowing, you have to let the public know, you have to give them an opportunity to comment, to do the petition, all of that. For short-term borrowing, anything less than than five years, you can go directly to the bank, do a borrowing bylaw and you don't have to do the advertising process. So what we'll do is you've done the long-term process for this to allow you to build the pool. Then when you decide what options you want to do with the pool, then you can do the short-term borrowing for the construction portion. And we'll bring that forward as it goes through.
Have we got a final number from the lines yet?
No.
No.
And again, too, this just allows that, the figure that we anticipated at of the donations of the eight hundred thousand. And again, that's partly why, you know, it's worded the way it is, is that, again, when it comes back, if a party comes along and offers X amount of dollars, then we can up it or lower it depending on what we need. So that's the maximum point that we would anticipate spending.
So this is not to exceed five percent, is this a common?
It's just a number we had to put in there.
Okay.
Back when the interest rate was, they used to give you a number for it. And right now, the maximum interest you're over to Capital Finance was three point one two. So we just put in five, just.
So that in ten years, if it's higher, we-
No, if, no, that's the thing about doing a debenture.
Okay.
We pay, it's fixed for the length of the time of debenture.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I meant. Like, so if in ten years, the interest rates at twenty percent, we're still locked in, whatever, yeah.
When we take the law.
And the bad thing about the debenture too, though, is that when you take it out, you're into it for the whole length of time. And if you pay it back early, you pay all that interest pending. So it's not like a normal bank note. If you pay it off early, you save interest, on this one, it doesn't, so.
That's why there's, when you see the debt and what we do, our annual financials, and you see the current loans that we have with AFSC, that's why there's no advantage paying out, even if they're twenty or thirty thousand dollars, because we don't get a break, other than clearing up.
Yeah, you clear it off the book.
You clear it off your debt load, but as you know, we only sit about forty to fifty percent of our debt load. So, you know, a lot of times, there's no advantage to paying it out, so. So I just wanted to, if I could, we've gone through the timeframe, as you know, of what we went through at the committee of the whole meeting. From second and third reading, there still is a thirty-day application to the Court of Queen's Bench to declare the bylaw invalid. Of course, we've done everything properly, so I don't anticipate any issues with that. But we wouldn't, the first week, day, we would be able to borrow money would be February fourteenth, twenty twenty. We all know that that's on this bylaw, we're not going to borrow until the end of the project, so. Just to let you know where we're at timeframe from, the advertising was completed and I've completed the declaration on January third that we didn't receive a petition. We did receive lots of random phone calls and were able to answer the questions from the people that did call. Overall, the responses.
So if for some reason we decide, well, the best scenario would be that this all this money, this lands in our lap and we don't have to do anything for it. But assuming we decide to bulldoze the place in and call it quits and not build a pool, we're not tied into any, until you sign off on it?
No, you've done the borrowing bylaw, but you do not have to do the borrowing unless you need it.
Yeah, so like you said, if for some reason we decide not to build a pool coming up farther up, then we don't have to borrow a nickel. Or if somebody comes along with some more money, we don't have to borrow the full amount. Or if somebody came along with the full amount, and then we wouldn't have to borrow any. But this allows us the ability to borrow that amount of money for that length of time if we so desire to borrow it.
Can you make it for anything less than twenty-five years?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so when we decide to borrow, we can change, okay.
Boy, absolutely.
I believe it goes in fives, doesn't it?
Yes.
Isn't it five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five? Isn't the most five, or can you get the two point five?
Yes, you can, and they all have varying ranges for. Here and then. So this is from a municipal standpoint.
Three years, I guess, is the most.
Yeah, from a municipal standpoint, this is, you can do it one year, three year, five year, ten year, fifteen, twenty, and these are the interest rates that are sitting. Forty and fifty are unusual and you have to ask them for it. And the reason being is a municipality can't borrow for more than the life of a project. So a lot of things they don't, you know, if you're taking them home for fifty years, you have to prove the life of your project's going to be more than that. So this is the calculator that I use. And then you can calculate the loan on a term of ten years. So then. Based on. So a twenty-five-year loan on two point five million dollars as of today. Loan payments are sixty-eight thousand twice a year, so a hundred, a hundred and thirty-six thousand per year. That's what it would cost you to have fifty payments, because they do by annual. And then it breaks down, you know, your actual amount, how much interest you pay over the loan and the total pay over twenty-five years you pay on. You pay nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in interest. That's how we do our quick calculations, because those interest rates and that change every day. So they, they're on the day of borrowing, so. That's what we use in the background to come up with these numbers for you. This is a pretty straightforward process.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions on borrowing bylaw? Okay, so we gave, we've given it first reading. We've had our advertising period, so now we go after a second reading. Somebody wish to move second? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. Okay, that's carried unanimously. Now, do you want to introduce or do the third? Somebody wish to, Laura moves the third? Any question on Miles' motion? Hearing none, I will call a question. Okay, and that's carried unanimously. Thank you, and moving on to physician recruitment.
Could we do the third?
That was third, you don't have to.
We don't have to, I thought you just said the third, sorry, I was even reading it.
Sorry, yeah. When you do the, introduce the third, if you do all three at the same. Okay, so this is the physician recruitment and.
I do apologize that minutes for this were later, later in our agenda. So hopefully, when you guys all reviewed, you did get the correlation between the minutes and the motions that were made out at that meeting for this. Back to the, to the agreements that have been put forward. This, just like the other, has a report with a recommendation to, that if you're, if you'd like, you could enter into the inter-municipal recruitment. But as the conclusion states ahead, there is the clinic agreement for Arrowood and the clinic agreement for Vulcan Clinic. You guys were able to sign in if you do want to discuss the terms of the agreements. You'll have to wait camera for that because there is confidentiality in both of them. But if you don't, we have all three motions ready for you if you do want to either accept or decline all three, so.
Well, I just a question, when we're, I don't know. Just on procedure, how all this goes, like, does all the, all the money collected go into one pot, for say, lack of a better term? And then the X amount of dollars goes to Arrowood and X amount of dollars goes to Vulcan? Or is that being paid, like, is the town of Vulcan taxpayer, do I pay into it? That goes to Vulcan and do I pay into it again to?
There's one pot and then the county administers that pot of money. And they distribute it by the agreements that are in the other document, how it was split up.
So Vulcan is, the Vulcan Clinic will be getting a little bit less because it's going to?
No, they increased it, so that Arrowood would come on stream. And because they increased it, we believe that the Milo will come back in. Remember at one of our meetings, they gave us a notice, one year or the six months notice, we have to give one year notice that they were going to opt out. Now they believe that they'll be back in, even though it's going to cost them a little bit more.
So the county's put together the agreements. They were available to everyone to review. We didn't pay the clinic agreements open to the public. But Tom was to that meeting. Again, the county is the administering management for these agreements, so. We just paid them a lump sum and they distribute it.
Did everyone feel comfortable with the meeting?
Yes, I mean, to be honest with you, and it goes back into like Kim said, farther in. They both did a good job. This Lanaffair did an excellent job of her, on her presentation. You know, and fortunately, she's a lot younger and she's more active enough and more tech savvy than other gentlemen, but they both did a great job. And I think that the decision after they came is that they would like to both come to a, again, either to a communication meeting and, you know, bring anybody up to speed of what they're doing and how. And so it was a good presentation, that's for sure. So like Kim had said, unfortunately, this one comes up early because this one's in current business and the other one's farther down in the, at the end of the term. Is there any other questions or thoughts on this? And we do have some money in reserves.
We have just about an entire year's payment for this in reserve.
So this will not affect our budget, even though, you know, we should have really had this meeting- So this will not affect our budget, even though, you know, we should have really had this meeting back in October. You know, so it could come before the, you know, all the municipalities before the budget crunch, but it didn't happen.
So if council's in favor of it, we, we will require formal motions from council to enter into these agreements if, if you find them favorable.
So we'll end up having four.
So we think three motions.
For one, first, second introduction, and then the third motion. Do you not?
No, 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 you need a motion to enter, enter into the, into the intermunicipal. So that's, that's the group, the new, the, the new agreement for the entire group, the town, the county. And then we need a separate motion for the Arrowood Clinic and a separate motion for entering into Vulcan.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for clarifying. Okay, so Paul, you wish to move the first one?
Yes.
For the intermunicipal recruitment.
Okay, so is this fall under our municipal plan that we have?
It will.
It will.
Okay, any other questions on Paul's motion? Here now, I'll call the question. Okay, that's Kerry DeNance speaking. Okay, so now the next one is Arrowood, intermunicipal, Lyle moves out, or did you have a question? Okay, thank you. Lyle moves out. Any question on Lyle's motion? Here now, I'll call the question. That's Kerry DeNance speaking. Okay, and the last one is to enter to an agreement with Vulcan, George Lee.
Will these run this, like, calendar year or?
Yes.
Yeah.
If we get four again.
For the four years.
For the four, four years.
To December thirty.
And the reason why they did the four years, well, we're at two, is so that it didn't affect with election. So it kind of went into, so that we didn't put the new people, potentially a new council, under the gun to have to make this decision. So that's why they thought they'd give the new councils an opportunity to get a little bit up to speed before they were introduced into another.
Funding agreement.
Funding agreement, so that's why it's four years. Any question on the George Lee's motion? Here now, I'll call the question. And that's Kerry DeNance speaking again, thank you. Okay, moving on to seven two, the swimming pool replacement project capital. So is there any questions on what Kim is? Submit.
Well, I guess as I see it, we only have two options really. If we don't do it or we do do it, and if we do do it, then we have a variety of options in there.
Correct.
And if we don't do it, we're probably leaving town.
Well.
My thoughts are, well, first of all, I think we received some criticism at the. Committee of the whole meeting for maybe not speaking up as much as we should. Self maybe. Personally, I, I think I learned a bit more from sitting back and observing and listening as opposed to talking. So that's my response to the, to the criticism that we had. I think we've gone through the process, we've engaged with the community on what they wanted in a pool, their wish list, and it was broken down to what we could. More economically afford. We've set up a pool committee to bring back recommendations. I think it's been looked at quite a bit. I've spoken to a lot of people in the community about what's going on. I mean, there's, of course, people that would like an indoor pool that, you know, was just not economically feasible. But I think a pool is still something that are, is an attraction to the community. It keeps people here, it gets people coming here. Even if it's three or four months, I think it's still almost a family tradition for some people for the kids to come and take swimming lessons and stuff here. I think it's an attraction, I think it's a positive thing going, going forward. And in, in my opinion. I would like to see the whole thing done, not just a phase one, and phase two maybe later on, because I think prices never go down, they go up. But it's, it's how we, we implement it because there's more, there could be money coming in. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the pool going, going forward. I would look at, myself, look at the option of maybe going with the basin, going with the basics first. And with the possibility of having the pool with a hot tub and the water slides. We bought those prices held till the end of April. Right, April thirtieth. And then if we get extra grant money coming in for that, then by all means apply the money for that and you save a few bucks. But also with the. The money that we've got set aside for, that we can borrow and the total cost of the whole project, there's not a whole lot of difference there in price when you look at it, so. My thoughts are is that we, I'd like to see the whole thing go forward at once. I'd like to say for the, for the hot tub and the, and the water slide, we wait till the end of April to see if we could actually, to pay for that. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, I think that it's kind of talked about in that, just before the conclusion, it says, based on the pending grant application from ICIP. Council may wish to consider awarding the base contract at this time, which Lyle spoke on, the pool and the building. And then award the, the construction of the hot tub and water slides. So we would hold off on that one with the guarantee that they would guarantee that pricing. And so we do have that written, that they would guarantee that pricing. So I think your philosophy has merit, that, you know, we would like to see the project move forward complete. But award only two to start off with, but it's up to you folks to, we've heard from Lyle's thoughts.
We don't have to make a commitment on the hot tub and the water slides until the end of April.
Correct.
That's right.
And we're still waiting on the bids.
We're hoping, we're hoping that, that they're kind of saying that they'll.
I, I can speak to that, we actually, after the committee, the whole meeting, we checked on the federal funding. And as you guys know, we were supposed to know by December whether we have. They told us at that point that if we hadn't heard by December, we'd be moving on to the next phase. So we have moved on to the next phase of the federal funding, but the notice we got now says spring, summer, twenty twenty. So we're hoping it's spring, but we've been waiting on this one for almost a year, so there's, there's good end path with it. By waiting this extra couple of months, it does allow time for that possibility of that grant funding to come in. The other side of it, timing of the project and that. At some point, council needs to make the decision, how long do we, to see if you get that funding, so.
Now, the only, sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Monsieur, regardless, we've still got the borrowing by law, which takes.
Yes.
To a full commission.
We're, we're pretty close, there's, it could be a little bit over, you know, depending on what happens with the contingency, but.
Didn't want to, if, if I could, I know questions were brought up from the, the committee, the whole, the exact cost. I wanted to make sure that to everybody that this presentation gives you every, that transparency of exactly what this project will cost with the four different options that are available. I want to make sure everybody, if there are any questions inside this funding, that I make sure that I answer them now.
Okay, in May when we did that four point five million.
Right.
And now we've gone up to five, five point two. So when did we change it from four point five to five point two?
Well, the, we, when we did the four point five, we were anticipating the soft costs, well, the soft costs weren't anticipated in it. And on this one here, the soft costs and the contingencies are in this.
Didn't we say four point five, everything included?
Well, I, I think that we had hoped that where the direction would become, but when we went up for tender, we realized that if you, if you do all three pieces. That, and you add the contingency and the soft cost, it comes in at the five point two.
Did, we didn't make a motion on the four point five?
Uh, there isn't.
You included it in your capital budget.
It's in our capital budget.
So did we have to approve this five point two?
Yes, you did.
We, yes.
Did we do that? Did I miss it?
Well.
No, you, that was when you gave direction to do the borrowing by law.
Okay, I just wanted to make, I thought, was I at the lunch one day in here or something?
And, and this is the thing, there was a complete misunderstanding because some people thought that, that the construction costs are four point five. And if you look at that final option of everything, the construction cost is, and you were making, you did the borrowing. You did the capital budget in May before we had any cost estimates for the project. Based on the project manager and a bunch of people sitting around going, the ideas that we got from the community are going to be around that dollar figure for construction. So some people were under the understanding that that was for construction, other people were under the understanding this was for the entire project. I think that's where the confusion lies, because like Tom said, when you start adding contingencies, contingencies, nobody calculated contingencies at the beginning of the project. Because if you don't know the value, how do you pick a ten percent or, or seventeen percent on a unknown number, so.
So you're right, George Lee, we did approve the four point five in our capital budget.
And when you got cost estimates, that changed.
That, that changed.
And so when you looked at those funding models and you gave direction for administration to do the borrowing by law based on that class A cost. Remember when we did the presentation of the class A cost estimate at the five point two, that's when you guys decided.
Okay.
To move forward with that project at that price.
Okay, because Wood Brothers is right around that, what are we at, what, three, three point six?
Three point six for the basin and the building, if you include the hot tub and water slides, they're at four point four.
Well, wasn't there also additional regulation changes that ended up increasing things as well that we?
Yes.
During the process.
During the process.
Stuff too.
And that's where, you know, they, they did the, the four levels of, of estimating. So as they went through it, and so then there was alterations made in the proposal to tighten up the numbers as much as they could. So the, the building that I showed you guys, you know, that came in at eight point five million. Obviously, we realized that, you know, we're quite a ways from the four point five, when it would go up for tender. And so then they redesigned it again, then they went back to have it, cost it out again, and then they came back and beat it up a little bit more and, until they got it down to. So then the tender pricing that came in at Ward Brothers at the basin, the basic bid at three point six, three four, that's the basin and the.
The bill.
The building. And then the second one we added in is options, and that's where some of the question came to is, why didn't we break it down even farther and have four or five options? And it was recommended to us that we not break it down too much, otherwise it'll just muddy the waters even worse.
It wouldn't take it seriously, it's a serious project if there was too many components.
So that's partly why, but the hot tub and the water slides, and the other advantage of that too is that, you know, the Lions Club did do fundraising strictly for, and they applied for a grant for the hot tub. So it's easy when you broke it out, they know that for sure that the amount that they asked for or got donated to them by the foundation. Was that it would go strictly towards that ninety-five thousand dollars, which, and then the six hundred eighty-six was the water slides on there, so.
And I think it's important that we, well, we as a whole community know that this is our construction cost, that, that we have other costs too. Because that's what really.
Right.
It really surprises everyone is how much that like goes up, the contingency and the soft costs.
And, and there's always been a discussion too, that some people think that, that when the contractor bids the project, he is bidding with contingency. They are not, they do not bid the contingency and they do not bid in any GST, because as municipalities, we do not.
We, we pay it, but we get it back.
We, we, you know, so we do not account for that either in that. So this price that they have given us is three point six, three four, does not include any contingency on our behalf. They might have some contingency on their behalf, but that's none of our business in a way, that's a normal operating thing. You know, everybody that puts something up for sale, they know how much money they want, how much money they need. And they wiggle that around as tight as they can. So you, as you look at the bids, you can see that they're very close on most of them. I mean, there are a couple that are, you know, quite a bit different, but the majority of them are fairly close, like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Are within less than ten percent or around ten percent difference, so.
So on the funding options that are there, I just wanted to make some, some notes. Everybody's, I'm sure, has spent the weekend staring at these numbers and, and trying to figure out exactly where, where you want to be. Just a quick explanation, the contingencies, Town of Vulcan projects, when you saw the contingencies in the class A cost estimate, they were up around six hundred thousand. Those were based on seventeen percent contingencies, the Town of Vulcan never does any more than ten percent. So I talked to Gillem, and for the projects that he's been part of over the last couple of years, he was comfortable with recommending a ten percent contingency. So as you can see, if you were to pick option one at three point six million, the contingency is three hundred sixty-one thousand, or three hundred sixty-three thousand. If you go up to four point four one five for everything, the contingency is four hundred and forty-one thousand. So that's the explanation on that. The other that I needed on, to explain on the soft cost is you can see that there's a slight escalation of five thousand fifteen, and it goes up. And that's because of the total cost of the project. The engineers bid the project at a, at the budget price of four point five million, where we, where we said we wanted to be. And if we escalate that project, then they have to escalate their engineering fees. And we've got fairly good rates on our engineering fees from HDR, we're at nine point seven five percent. Their escalation is not more than nine, it's actually, when we cross the four million mark, we're at four and a half percent. So I, I've done the calculation for the escalation in there. And then the last thing that's worth noting, and that's where George Lee's comment and question from the committee of the whole. What's the exact cost of the project? That's what these numbers come up with, are the exact cost. But you have to remember the contingency is money that we are holding, but do not intend on spending. Then the last thing worth noting is of, of the five hundred eighty, that five thousand, six hundred twenty-three thousand, at the top and bottom end of that scale. Two hundred and thirty-six thousand of it on each category is already money that you have in your operation budget, so it should not be included on the capital side. But you asked that question, what is the total cost? Those, that two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is included in that total cost. So that's why that's broken out the way it is, and this is the, if you were to pick option one. This is the funding that you would require, option two, funding that you require, option three, funding that you require, and third. Now you can see from the total available funding of five point two two, if you were to do everything in this project, including the optional items, it'd be five. Five million two hundred and forty-two thousand, so you would be into your contingency funding to the tune of about ninety thousand dollars. If that's something you're comfortable with, then you can move ahead with it. The other thing worth mentioning is if you do hold off until April, you would fund at this level. Four million three hundred and forty-two thousand, but in a couple of months, you would need to find the, the additional nine hundred thousand dollars. Which, which we have, yeah, available through the borrowing, so. So, so if you move, if you move forward with, uh, the first two options and didn't intend on doing anything else, you would only need four point three.
Like if you did the building and the basin.
And didn't do anything else.
Didn't do anything else, even though our intention is to do all. But for some reason, something happened and we only built the building and the pool basin, you're looking at four point three four. If you did the pool, basin, and building, and the hot tub, that's when you look at four point four, four, five. If you did the basin and one of the water slides, and remember that was a question that was asked after, originally it wasn't in the bid, and they were recommending that if you built only once water slide, that they would recommend that you built the tallest one, and then add the second one later. So that's why there's four options where they're, when they went out for tender, there was only three questions asked, building with the pool and the hot tub separate and the water slides separate. And then we asked that question, well, if we could only afford one water slide, how much would we save?
So, and I, I just wanted to point out, our current swimming pool, how many phases was it supposed to have?
Well, it was supposed to have four phases, and only one was ever built.
That's one thing that was brought up to me by a.
Right here.
My great parent was that, said if you're gonna do it, do it all, cause this was supposed to be, I thought he said two or three phases, our current one, but they only got one done. And, yeah.
Yeah, cause see originally, the, the original pool that was built there, the phase one was just the pool and the building. And then they added the hot, the waiting pool on separate. A donor came along and paid for just the waiting pool separately in the name of his daughter that passed away. And so, but phase two of that was a diving tank. And because no diving group ever came along and pushed the issue, it kind of got put on hold. And then when the cultural recreation center was being looked at, cause originally the phase two, or phase three of that pool base area, which was called the Gray Palace, um, it had, um, the cultural center or recreation center built onto that, where the, the, um, the skateboard park and part of the, um, rest of that area across there, that's supposed to be built. So you are right, Lyle, originally they anticipated building it, but it never happened in the 50 years or 40 some years that the pool's been there.
Well, I, one of the reasons I was, I like having this with the hot tub and the slides, the, um, speaking with someone earlier today, if we just build the same thing, uh, where is the, I don't think this is much of an attraction, but if you got something different, like if, uh, to have the water slides, I think that's something different for people to come in, even if they're outed, seeing Craig or Lake or Little Bow, it's, it's another attraction to get people in, and I, I just think that's another attraction for the town, in my opinion.
I think you're right. I think that it shows, like you go to Anderson as an example, um, um, or you go to Raymond, and I think when you go to Pitchaboot and see their, their one's water slide, you'll be impressed and, and, you know, they'll gleam and attract people because it's a different than what is normal. And I think that's partly why we want to not lose on anything either, like, you know, the hot tub wasn't originally in, ever bought up until, um, they built onto the, the pool and added, or had the gazebo and the, um, sand pits and the, um, or the volleyball and the water park area. When that all was added, that's when the hot tub was added. But I think that the majority of people see it as an asset and it's designed into the programming that they offer. So I, I'd hate to, I think you'd hate to see it lose it, but.
I think a pool without a slide for kids is not going to be appealing, if there's a slide there for them.
I mean, there, there will be an addition to this pool if you don't go with a slide, and I don't think that that's what the intention of majority of us are. I think we'd like to see the slide and the, and the, in the, uh, hot tub added, but I think that with the grant structure, I think that if we're going to approve all of it tonight, we should let ICP, or C, ICIP know that we're starting the project before the, the grant has been awarded and turn it down.
We'd be ineligible for that.
Would be ineligible. I, I think we should let them know right ahead because sure, it's only, it's gonna affect this one grant, but I think down the road they're gonna say, you know, you guys already started the project, we're not gonna give you a grant because you've already started, whereas this way we can say we have not started this portion of the project. That's strictly a Tom Grant's opinion, you guys, um, understand.
I don't think we can afford to just wash our hands of 1.3 million dollars. We have to do what we can to stay in the running for that as long as we can.
And I think by the, sorry, the, the grant being that the contractor has guaranteed us in writing that they will hold that pricing, should not affect the end deadline at all. Um, I think, again, I, I think you're right, anyway, sorry, Paul.
I was just gonna say, if we're gonna play the game, why don't we make a motion, we revisit the option two and three, middle of April.
One thing that you, one thing you can do, these, you know, these are public meetings, they're recorded, you know, the people will be able to watch that. Having the discussion here at this table as a group and making a decision on what model of, what options you want to do for a pool, your motion tonight can be just to do the basic building and basin. And if you're open with the public, Lions Club, all, all of the partners that we have, the intention is to move forward with the other portions of this project in April, just to give yourself time to, uh, to, to maybe, maybe gleam that, that grant funding. That's, that's very open and that's, you know, that's a, that's a good decision of council to, to leave that option open. You do have a contractor that has signed a document that says that their pricing will retain until April. That lets you get started, uh, in March with the demolition and the start of construction on the things that we know are gonna take time. The hot tub and water slides are additions to the project, and as you saw in the letter from our consultant, we can add that as a contract at any time. So if you would like to move forward with something like that, then all you need to do is move forward with the motion for a basin and whatnot. Be open and transparent, if somebody asks you on the street, yes, we're doing the entire project, we're waiting for the grant funding, if at all possible, but we can't read any later, later than April 30th. You do have a council meeting on April 27th, so I'll just put together the, uh, the information for the rest of the project and.
Yeah, and if for some reason we get the grant funding sooner, well, then you can move that motion.
Then you can approve it, you can approve it at an earlier meeting.
Let's just cross our fingers for sooner rather than later.
Well, I, I was more concerned when I saw the spring, summer, but as, when I mentioned it to Tom, when I was concerned about it, because it does say spring, summer, 2020, now is when they're anticipating to award these. But they also made a clear note in there for the 2020 construction season. Well, anybody knows that if you don't get your funding until August of, not year, there is no construction season because you won't have time.
March 30th?
Yes.
So that, to me, that's kind of the deadline that you're.
So we should know before the beginning of April.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if, if that's what they're worried about. If not, I would say we probably won't hear for another year beyond that.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's where you guys as council get to decide how long you'll wait for. We've had this application in, you know, for, for quite some time.
Is it normal for these to take this long?
The federal election threw this one off.
Fair enough.
Lyle, yeah?
Just food for thought, um, I know our, our MP is a, a real position, but minority government in that, uh, would it be a good idea to invite, uh, Martin Shields to the groundbreaking?
Oh, I think so.
Have a city going? Absolutely not.
I believe so, and, and I think to, to give Martin a heads up on what we're proposing and why we're proposing, probably wouldn't hurt either, you know, I mean, um, you've noticed how much Martin participates in, and even, even our MLA, I think we'll, you know, invite them too, so that we can have an opportunity to showcase what we're trying to do for our community.
And between now and then, I can reach out to Martin and, um, and ask him if he has any information on, on the ground process.
Well, I think, as Paul said, I think we're better to go in at this level and kind of hope like heck that the other grant comes through and we can up it. I guess if not April 27th, we've got a really tough decision to make.
Well, but we're still painting and by, well, we won't know by then probably, but pretty close of what our contingency is going to look like, you know. We still can still move this project forward. We're gonna be a little bit over budget if we don't get the full grant money, but, um, you know, we, we don't know exactly how the, the donations and the other funding that we don't know of is gonna fall into place either.
And I think the idea of having communication or more communication with the community is critical.
Yeah.
Cause I, I think everybody was sitting waiting, waiting, waiting to what's going to happen. So now it has, and people are all stirred up one way or another because it may or may not have been to their liking. So I think we have to have time to digest it and discuss it quite openly, and I think having all the numbers should make it quite clear for everyone.
And, and basically, is that 1.3? We don't get it, it's still covered in our borrowing.
Right, yes, right.
So we can still go ahead, come the end of April, with a hot tub and water slide.
It's just that if they weren't gonna tell us till May 10th or something, that would just be.
And, and again too, I think that the closer we get to that date, the closer we can argue that, you know, we withheld the project as long as we could, anticipating a word on the project. But I think if we prove it today, anticipating that, you know, I, I just think we're leaving funds on the potential funds on the table.
I think it's way too much money to just wash our hands of it this quick.
But, but anyway.
Do we have anyone we can contact in the ground department?
Yeah, we've been, we've been reaching out, but they, they pretty tightly, pretty tightly with, uh, with how this is going.
And sometimes we do find out, but they say we can't release it either, it's on a certain date so that they can get their ducks in order, but, um, I don't think we heard that much, so. So, so it's up to you folks which direction you want to go. We would, we, I would like to entertain a, a motion on moving forward with this project and, um.
All right, let's start with a motion for the 3.634 million dollars.
So, so I've put, I've put the motion together that contains the wording that you require out, and then obviously I left the, uh, the dollar figure blank, so if you'd like, I can read it out loud, the council award the construction contract for the swimming pool capital replacement project to Ward Brothers Construction in the amount of, if you'd like to do the pool, just the basin and the building, three million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, with funds to be drawn from capital reserves, provincial grants, donations, and borrowing by law number 1487-19.
Okay, so is that a favorable call? Any other discussions or questions?
Do you feel comfortable with that, Lyle?
I, I think we just need to ask, uh, for, Ward Brothers has the bid, I mean, they were recommended to us from Tango, I mean, not just because they're the lowest bid, because they also have the experience and that.
Yeah, so they, uh, so the committee, uh, when they reviewed, uh, it came down to the two lowest, and based on the, on, uh, you saw that we asked for clarification on a couple things. One came down to the pool basin itself, and, uh, the other was timelines of, of, for the auctions within the, and Ward Brothers is partnered with Western Rec, who we have experience with, we've, we've talked to in the past, and Caliber was with Austin Carroll. The comparison we wanted to do was on whether Austin Carroll was going to do a cement tank or a steel tank, cause they do both. And, uh, we clarified with Ward Brothers because we know that Western Rec does a steel tank, so we just wanted to clarify, and when we compared apples to apples, of course, Ward Brothers for the basin and the building came in with the lowest bid. So that's where the recommendation was straightforward. And the reason why the committee and through the letter that you saw from Tango, that's why it came down to a recommendation for one rather than two, so that you guys didn't have to go through the line by line of the specifics of the, of the tender documents. Does that clarify that as well?
And I just also want to point out, I liked the chart that you did that broke everything down with contingency, soft costs and everything, that just made it a lot more clear, isn't it?
I, I wanted to make it very clear, based on the, the comments that were made at the Committee of the Whole meeting about the actual cost, because again, I think that there was a lot of confusion on budget wise of whether they were construction costs or whether it was overall costs. So depending on your interpretation, if you do every option with the construction, it's four and a half million dollar budget. If you do the overall cost for everything, then it's just the pool and basin that you're gonna get for four and a half million.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Paul's motion. Here now, call a question. And it's carried unanimously, thank you very much. And moving on to.
Kim, I may, when we talk to the press about this, emphasize that yes, we are gonna do the whole project.
And, and yes, and that's why you guys have a that open discussion, it's all work.
Okay, 7.3, um, I'm sure you have all had an opportunity to read the, this, um, and this is our opportunity to request some funding from participating, some of the funding on the board to support the county.
I, I put together the report, as you all know, the county has verbally supported this project at the beginning, but as they've been able, unable to commit dollar figures because they didn't actually know the actual cost, you have now made a motion to spend a set amount of dollars on the project based on the competitive tender process. So now would be the proper time to ask the county if they would like to participate in the capital project. So if you find it favorable, we, uh, we can, uh, draft a letter on behalf of council to county council requesting.
Martin moves that. Any question on Martin's motion? Okay, call a question.
So do we have to do any lobbying?
I'm not sure. It's carried unanimously, so it will occur. Okay, moving on to the insurance requests from the Vulcan County Performing Arts Society.
Very straightforward proposal for many, uh, organizations. We do additionally re-insure, uh, covering under the town's policy. There is an increase to the premium for adding, uh, a group to our insurance, but the model that we use with Volso is that, uh, they cover the costs of that with council's permission, you just add them to our insurance, so.
Quite a few that.
We, we do.
What kind of dollars are we looking at for them?
I believe this one was 500, I believe, please don't.
No, I'm just curious.
It, it, it really what it comes down to is it just saves them a little bit of dollars that being a nonprofit, and they're, they're putting everything back into their events right now, but any, any savings.
Apparently they're sold up to the next one.
They are, so that's, that's great news.
Super news.
So they, they were good enough to submit a, a letter of request, and so Bonnie brought this forward, because from our insurance company, they do need a motion to council to, to add those.
Go for it, it's your turn.
Your turn, cause everybody gets a turn.
Okay, George Lee moves this. Any questions, Paul, on George Lee's motion? Here now, call a question. And it's carried unanimously, thank you.
It looks like Hamworth is freely waving around on the three million dollar one.
Okay, moving on to 8.1 tourism meeting. There is an error in this.
Sorry?
Yeah, it was carried at the next meeting, but I guess.
We can definitely amend it though, or mention it for a bit, it's a.
Where did this error at? It's in there somewhere. There is an error somewhere in there that I found.
Just spelling more context.
No, well, it's, um.
Oh, person?
I think it's under the bird of prey one.
Cell going.
Oh yeah, there it is. It says Mason Dawes commented regarding that Heli Arts Society fundraising efforts on the bird of prey. Then farther down it says, um, out to get funds will be created with a picture of a B of F instead of a B of P, bird of prey flying over Vulcan. So I'm not sure what kind of, a bird of flying, bird of flying, or bird of feathers, or bird of fox, flying over Vulcan. So I assume that.
Okay, I'll, I'll just, I'll just mention it.
It's in 7.2.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Anything else? Let's leave my song. Okay, we'll move on to the Canadian Badlands. Okay, any questions?
The worth noting that the Chakarmi is trying to draw in the Badlands.
Interested in drawing, yes, that's good. 8.3, the Tourism November 14th meeting. Any question on anything there?
I see that they must be doing quite a bit of remodeling down there, they've got their racks for sale and their.
I was saying that the other day, it looks very good.
Everyone, everyone should go, everyone should go for a visit.
I was thinking before Christmas, but I haven't been back since.
Trying to, they, they, they started to get things set up for that new experience as you walk in. I believe the committee went down after the meeting.
Looks good. Okay, any other questions or thoughts on that one? Not one we want to read general response to elder abuse council? Any questions on that one at all? I'm not sure if it's related because of this group has started or whether it's something that was there before, but, um, if, if you're a senior and you go into the hospital, they give you a questionnaire and it asks you, do you feel threatened? Do you feel like you're under arrest? But I got to fill it out. Over my mom, I go, whoa. You know.
So you have to know?
Yeah. But anyway, I wasn't sure whether it had to do with this or whether it was something else, you know, in conjunction with this, I'm assumed, but you know, but, but anyway, it's, it is a document that's at the hospital now that, you know, they, yeah.
Is it just for seniors only?
I don't know, Laura.
I kind of thought it was for everyone.
I, I can't tell you, I, all I know is I.
Is it for seniors only?
No, it's for everybody, yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure. All I know is that it was handed to me to fill out while mom was being seen, so.
And you might be the one that was causing the problem, yeah.
I don't want to see.
Yeah, that doesn't sound.
Well, I think the only reason is because they knew who was at, and I'm not sure, I didn't, but I felt the doubt, but anyway. It's really not an offensive document to fill out, I mean, I thought it was really quite well worded. Any, any other questions or comments on this one? Sorry, I kind of went on personal interest. Okay, Marcus Foundation, October 29th meeting. Okay, Mayor's and Reeves for December 6th. Okay, moving on to the doctor retention and. So there was a good, you know, representation from all the municipalities within the county. And then there was the four of the ones that just showed up.
Certainly heard a lot of good things about the arrow with clinic.
Yeah, she.
She's got the 889 on a witness.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the reason why she, like, I'm not sure that everybody knows that or not, but she is a local girl to degree, uh, she lives in Speargrass and, um, she, she did her, some of her internship here in Vulcan. And the only reason that she, she has two reasons, major reasons why she didn't open up and or participate in Vulcan right at the moment is that she didn't believe that she could belong to that, that, their practice and not take home. And yet she didn't want to be on call. That was number one. And then she also has a real passion for the people that live in the Araline area. So those are the two reasons. And being that she lives in Speargrass, she did work in Stratmore and then she had a clinic in Glee Shion and she closed one Glee Shion move the terror. But they do, did buy the, um, the mall that she's in and they've opened up a pharmacy too, so, you know, there's another pharmacy in the community. But she's only open four days a week. You know, open, open. Really super nice lady to visit with though. Right down there, so I think she's a huge asset to the community, so. Any questions on that one at all? If not, somebody wish to move the committee reports, Lyle? Questions on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call a question. That's carried unanimously. Okay, now we'll move on to councillor's reports, Mr. Taylor.
Many people, I went to the Christmas train, went to the Canadian Home Meeting and also had folks just been there tonight. And rather than losing $47,000 last year, they made a profit. It's a very small profit, you'll probably get eaten up in amortization, that's up to the auditor, but they're heading in the right direction. And that's all we've got.
Okay, any questions for Paul? And non-councillor Bolt?
I didn't have anything, just the committee of the whole, everybody was there, so.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? Moving on to councillor Magnuson.
I too was at the committee of the whole meeting and I was at a meeting, telephone meeting with the mayor regarding pool, Tango, right, uh, just before Christmas and, uh, that was it for me.
Any questions for Lyle? Okay, councillor.
Uh, I also was at the committee of the whole and we had our tourism committee meeting last Thursday. We did go down to the track station. It is looking really, really wonderful. And the new space they have for the retail actually looks like a store, like it's set up that you can see that that is where they, the stuff is that's for sale. They've got a couple of new hoodies down there that look really, really sharp. The rest of the meeting was updates from other things, um, more working hopefully closely with the chamber in a few different areas, um, that we can work with the county Aspen Crossing and Town in Vulcan to save everybody a little bit here and there for, uh, conventions like, um, Comic Con's and those kinds of things.
Okay, uh, any questions for Laura? Okay, moving on to councillor Roddy.
In December, we know that they had Chamber of Commerce meeting, um, she was just kind of discussing the direction and a little bit more involvement in terms of the actual A groups and forming, considering. And then fortunately, um, in December, both my elder abuse and, um, community features meetings were canceled, one because of weather, one because of weather couldn't get quorum. On the sixth, I was at the committee of the whole meeting with everybody and the eighth was the Chamber AGM in Champin. And so kind of got a couple new members of the board, which is really exciting and hopefully, you know, we almost have all the legal stuff wrapped up in terms of the lawyers and a name that's it all, which is really great. And then hopefully it'll be more decisive as to the new direction of the chamber going forward and trying to do, just really focus on valuation equals time and in terms of hey, something can be determined by email, by this, by whatever, you know, can we avoid? Because it just, with having so many meetings and everything last year, like, yes, it, we needed it because it had a, you know, restart the whole thing, but at the same time, it was really bad for burning people out. So that's kind of the new direction with that and that's all.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? None, we'll move on to councillor Anshul.
Okay, excuse me, um, I was at the train and community of the, uh, committee of the whole, these readings. And, um, for the Marcus Foundation, we don't have a meeting until the end of the month, but there, we do have a new CAO that started on January 2nd. Her name is Sharon Jansen and she's right now from the Okatoks area, but she is putting her house up for sale, so we're hoping that she'll be able to move over here. And, um, the other thing I was going to ask because I've already got a snow, um, the ASHA convention is April 6th to 8th and I was just wondering if I would have permission to, to attend that.
If it's not holiday, we can put it on that next agenda for, uh.
Okay, but for early, early, that's what we did wrong last time, or I did wrong last time, I didn't have it. It's January 31st, I think is the.
Oh, okay, so.
Well, I guess we still could. What's the next meeting?
The 26th.
Okay, well then we can put it on for, for then, if you want, sure.
Where's the ASHA one?
It's at Red Year this year.
And you guys kind of felt that that was a good one to go to.
Well, and I really, I would really like us to see, just get back into what is going to be happening because I think we have to do some talking with Colliers and see what's, what is actually happening. We have heard very little in the last few months, but part of it has been this, you know, because Marty was leaving and Christmas and everything, so we haven't really looked into it. So I think we really need to find out. You know, there's going to be nothing for me pretty soon, starting to panic. Sure, okay.
Okay, um, any questions, Laura?
That's it.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, well, go on to me, I guess, um, thanks, Laura. I participated in the holiday train and, um, then participated in the bid opening for the pool and, uh, and that's where the questions came back, that came back to the other meeting that Lyle had mentioned that he called in on. And, um, we had a, a conference of, of information on, on the questions that were asked. We, again, like I said earlier, I met with Kim on the Badlands visit, this young lady that came out and visited with us. SEWA executive meeting and doctor retention, which we got the minutes from and the decision that was made to move forward with. And then, um, uh, Mayor's and Reeves and, um, again, the major discussion on that one really ended up, there was a doctor there and spoke about how this, um, process is going to affect the doctors with the funding. And, um, it was quite, quite in length, it was quite detailed. It got a little, little, um, confrontational at, at times, but it really turned out to be not a bad meeting in the end. Then we had a SEWA meeting at Vulcan County and, um, where the, the decision was is that to invite three municipalities with the four sites to bring the information back to a meeting today in Calgary with HDR and so that they can all try and get the information exactly the same as close as they can. And so I will have the next executive meeting coming up next week, the SEWA. I was at the hospital construction meeting last Thursday and, um, things are progressing quite well, especially on the outside. Matter of fact, they started putting up metal today, so if you go there today or tonight, you'll, you'll see a portion of the facility with metal on. Now, the, the piece that's on there now, so there's kind of the brownish colored or tanny colored stucco.
I was hoping that wasn't the end.
That is the end.
That is?
Yes. And then around the front, there's a big, it's, it's white, but then the next two, there's three different colors of metal going on, so when you, when it's done, it looks quite substantially different than what it looks like today, but, but it's looking really good and, um, again, the board was hoping to anticipate that in February to, the board, won't get a chance to tour the facility inside and they're hoping by then all the interior walls will be up by dirt. So it should look pretty impressive. Yeah, when they come in, they said from the time they come in to the kind, they leave is about two weeks and theoretically, if everything else was done, they could move in almost the next day type thing, you know, that's how, like, the flooring will be in, the ceilings will be in, and then walls will go up on top of the flooring, but to the ceiling and tie them together.
Because it's modular, right?
Yeah, it's modular, so it's, you know, a bunch of cool. There, there's some really super great news coming down the pipeline, but I can't share it, um, was asked not to share it, but it's some really super great news for the facility, the hospital, so, um, it, I think once it's released, everybody will be really impressed. I do have a meeting on Wednesday with the Minister of Environment in Edmonton, so I'll go out there to deal with the SEWA. And then there's a couple other invitations that we just received too, just, just today on the SEWA project. So it's fairly moving on fairly quickly here, um, so hopefully in the next month or two, we'll, we're hoping to have meetings with just about every department in that kind of government. So that's about it for me. That, well, the next SEWA meeting is the end of the month, um, I think it's the 30th of, um, January or 29th of January here, I'll bridge, but. So any questions for me?
Will there be any announcements of that one?
I, well, I'd say I'd like to, but I hope to, but I doubt it, I think it'll be the February meeting that, you know, that, I, I, they're hoping to have all their stuff done by then, but.
So when you said the thing in Calgary today or tomorrow or whatever.
Yeah, today, yeah.
Today. Who was doing that?
HDR was, the engineers.
Oh, they were, no, they compared them all.
Yeah, so they sent out, well, they sent out in December questions to each municipality so that, um, each municipality has an opportunity to answer these questions because some of them had answered some of the questions or had submitted some of the information and now they felt that some of them didn't have an opportunity to submit that information. So to make it fair, the fairness committee that we have felt that they needed to ask the same questions for every municipality, so they all have an opportunity to answer them.
So the municipality gave the answers.
The municipalities that have, from the four sites.
Yeah, that were, yes.
Yes, so those four municipalities, Wheatland County, Newell and Vulcan County had to answer these questions and they were asked to come in and visit with HDR to answer these questions and then HDR will take this information and mull it over and bring back their decision at the end of the month, hopefully, but I'm anticipating February. Any other questions for you? If not, somebody wish to move the councillor reports?
I guess, sorry. Just one question.
Go ahead.
The, uh, when you have to go meet the minister in the environment, are you doing that as a chair of SEWA?
Yes.
Not because this might be the state of.
No, yeah, no, I'm there as a chair.
Chair.
And Paul Ryan is there as the lead, so he does his side of it and I do my side. We have decided that every meeting that we're going to from now on, we're tag team, um, you know, we have so length of time, so he usually brings up, uh, one side of it and I usually do the tag team side of the other, so. Sorry, I'm sorry, no, it's my.
Well, I was just wondering if I could ask councillor Thomas a question because I was too slow. I'll get after a report.
Sure.
Is there any chance that, uh, Vulcan can get George Takai to come out from the original Star Trek series when he's here for the comic con?
Um, I can put that forward, I can email Bonnie in the morning and suggest.
Um, I can put that forward. I can email Bonnie in the morning and suggest it, and we can see what happens.
I just.
All we can do is ask.
Yeah.
We had a list, people who have been.
His name's on the list.
Is his name on that list?
Uh, if you look at Bonnie's report.
Oh, it's on Bonnie's report.
What is it?
Okay.
Because there was one that couldn't make it because of conflicting schedules, one that was just way too expensive, and a couple with question marks. So I'm, I'm assuming that the question mark means either there's waiting for a response from contact, or something like that. There's, there's been contact made and waiting for more information.
I, I've seen the, the list for, for Vulcan. I just thought if he was going to be in the area.
Like I said, can't hurt to throw it on their house.
That's how Leonard D. ended up, because he was in the area.
Yeah, his name's not on that list.
No, it's not, that was for Vulcan. I, I was mistaken, sorry.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions? Somebody wish to move these to file? Laura? Any question in Laura's motion? Hearing none, no call question? And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the administration report, the action list.
Very straightforward down the the one page, unless there's councillor's questions, the ones that are on, majority will be there for a while as the lights can't go in until the weather's good, agreements are still pending. Unless there's any questions.
Did you ever get a price on the extra lights, your lights to go on the poles?
Stu's work, uh, he's, he's got it together, but he wasn't going to do it until the lights are actually in place. So he, he's, he's got the ballpark, but I can, I can bring it back. He was, he was going to do it as a formal proposal back to council.
Like the clear Christmas lights, like, was there in between the red and green?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I, I think that we talked to Stu about when they go to put the poles out there and put the electrical net into right away before, so they don't have to do it when they're standing.
Easier to do it on the ground.
Well, Stu doesn't know if they will be easier, but he said that it's more safer probably.
Yeah, they, they built a mechanism for our loaders, so that they can pick the poles up and turn them. So they drive up, clamp on the, on the pole, pick it up, and can turn it. They're hoping that, you know, save them some time in installation, because once the bases are in place, they can get the pole down there, pull up to the loader, pick it up, stand it right on the, on the basis, just. He made it sound, hey, the, the pictures he showed me were pretty, pretty cool. So.
Okay, any other questions on the activity report? Okay, moving on to the C A O's report.
Very straightforward. The amount of visitors I've had in my office since I got back, a lot of them councillors, you kind of all know where, what I've been up to and where I'm at. So unless there's any real questions, we did before I left, as, as Tom mentioned, we had a really good meeting with Badlands and how to get the best out of our partnership with, with them. The acute Laffbridge Community Foundation with that social program, that was, that was a really good visit as well. The rest of it's been, since I got back, obviously, jumping right back into it, preparing a committee of the hall meeting in a couple of days to, to get that information together, and then, of course, working my way through that borrowing bylaw, making sure that we had all the, the dates hit through the Christmas season, to make sure that we can have everything ready for March construction. I managed to take a couple of weeks to fill up my holidays and do the Christmas season, so unless there's any questions.
You shouldn't take time off, because it just comes back to you.
That's all right. It was, it was, it was, it was good time off.
Okay, so any questions for Kim? Okay, moving on to the Roman officers. Any questions on?
Nancy included her year-end summary, which is always interesting to compare our numbers to previous years.
Okay, any questions for Nancy's report? Okay, and the Buckworks.
Other than saying they've been doing a very fine job.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Stu wasn't really fond of the numbers on the thermometer this morning.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Sounds like Calgary had lots of water on you.
Okay, any question on Stu's? Okay, moving on to community services manager.
For the, for the arena, did the, I thought Roman for their arena, they, for it was taken down. They got new flooring from the N H L Players Association, is that for Vulcan? I just wondered, maybe they don't do that anymore? She's probably checking.
Yeah, I got, I'm not sure. This, this started as, as a couple of groups getting minor hockey gear together and remaking their requests. So they're just kind of going through the process right now of getting prices, looking at funding. And I know a couple of groups, just like, a lot of things, took the advantage and started fundraising for it to move forward. So if you do want to have a look at the flooring proposed, they did a test chunk from the south doors in the players' bench. They did that strip in there with the, with the new style flooring. Because when they took the, and the players' bench out, they had to put something to walk with their skates. And when I even looked at it, Stu said that it went down very well, seams buttoned, the joints buttoned up really well. Yeah, it was unfortunate, it was, they come in four by six sheets, and the chunk that they did was five feet. So either you should cut that foot off or add a foot or two, so. But it does, it looks really good. So if you're interested in the arena, it's worth a walk to the south side of the building to, to see it.
Okay, any questions on mornings?
Sounds like the new museum was a good success there.
I attended with my family, it was a lot of fun. Fireworks, good.
Guess I'll do it here. Okay, moving on to the C P Os. Questions on Greg's? Okay, moving on to the fire chiefs. Any question on Peter's? Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to file the reports? Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, Paul question? And it is carried unanimously. Great, thank you. So now I need a motion to move it into in camera for the C A O evaluation update. A lot of witnesses in camera. So I will ask Kim and also Kekau. Oh, sorry, sorry. Any questions on Paul's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. It's carried unanimously, to move it to camera. Okay, so Kekau.
Okay, so I'm just going to zoom in, and so that you all know, there's your sound.
Okay, so two motions, George Lee moved us out of camera at nine twenty-two, and it was carried unanimously. And Michelle moved us adjournment at nine twenty-three, carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and good night, folks.